Here.
Director Faulkner?
Here.
Director Goodman?
Here.
Director I?
Here.
Director Potroff?
Here.
Vice President Brown?
Here.
And President Cuneo?
Yeah. I know it's not on our agenda, but somehow with all the stuff going on, I think it's a good day to have a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. You turn it over. It's yours.
All right. So we have two visitors here tonight, Paula Boston and Kelsey Meyer. And they have been working with us for, they work for Magnetize, and they have been working with us in supporting our work around the strategic plan. So we are really excited about this presentation that you're going to have with us. And as I said in our Friday memo, making sure that we really kind of, they're going to walk us through the pieces of this, they're the experts who've been working on how to develop these vision, emissions, and values. So they were really able to take the information that we gave them and to create the products that we're going to be reviewing tonight. So I will turn it over to you guys.
Great. Thank you. A pleasure to be here. Thank you for giving us time during your board meeting. Oh, yeah. Speak up. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Good. It's a pleasure to be here. We're excited to share the work.
We were really able to take the information that we gave them and to create the product that we're going to be reviewing.
The session that we had last time where Director Goodman facilitated the brainstorming for this work was most useful. We got some very valuable insights, lots of affirmation on things we had been talking about with the leadership team already also. And we think we have some great ideas that we're going to hopefully lay the foundation for communications and messaging strategy work that the district will be doing through communications, but also as Dr. Keenan alluded, the strategic plan work that Dr. Bauer has spearheaded. With that, I'll give it to Kelsey, kind of level set us, and we'll dig in.
Yeah. So I'll just, just a little bit of context for what we'll share with you guys today. Few things that we heard in our discovery phase, which included meetings with the steering committee, multiple focus groups, interviews, that culminated in a lot of discovery work, but as it pertains to the mission, vision, and values, a few things we heard about that is, you know, current mission is a little too long, it's too tactical. We need to focus more on the why, more than the what of what you guys do. It needs to add a little bit more feeling and emotion. So what you see today will explore those things. And above all, students are at the center of what you do. Your parents, your partners, the community, they're all super important pieces of the puzzle, but they are a means to an end, and the students need to be the focus of these three things. Last time we met, Dr. Goodman, or Director Goodman, you had a fantastic slide that kind of explained how to get to the mission and to the vision, and it all starts with this belief statement, this foundational motivation for why people work with your district. And you guys created that for us, and we took that and we turned it into multiple options for your mission statement and multiple options for your vision, which we will share with you. That belief statement, last time we met, is this: We believe that every child has value to our society and deserves the opportunity to succeed and meet their full potential. We spent some time internally with our team, and we made that a more distilled version, a little bit shorter and succinct, and came up with this recommendation that every student deserves the opportunity to achieve their full potential. So that is your why statement, your belief in the foundation for why you do what you do and who you serve, who you serve. So with that, I'll give it back to Paul.
Thanks, Kelsey. And with that, help me use the word, a distilled version of that original belief statement, a common theme that you're going to see on some of the work that we're sharing with you tonight is born from just not our experience in this area with other clients and other brands, but also in a lot of the things we learned in the focus groups and in the meetings that we've had, and that is, that special school district is a big thing. It's a big, complex thing. Accessibility is an important aspect of what you do. Delivery of services, cascading of communication, parsing this whole thing down so that it can be approached and understood with clarity, with ease. And that's kind of what inspired that transition there with that statement. And you'll kind of see that line of thinking on the other things we're going to share with you tonight. And when we talk about things like mission statements and you're in a room full of people like this, it's easy to get, I don't know what the right word is, excited, focused on the deliverable. Like, oh my God, it's the mission statement. They etch these things in stones and things like that, right? It's on websites and all of that. We got to get it right. We can't forget anything. We can't leave anything out. But really what this is about is the reason everybody gets up every day and does this. And there's room for deeper narrative and other communications around the brand's realm, right? So this thing doesn't have to get every little widget that you sell. What it needs to is make people clearly understand why somebody chooses to go into this line of work, why we make the decisions we do as a district, operationally, daily, long-term, all of those things. So with that context, I'll share with you some of the, some of the thinking that we've done here. So it's funny, our team have lots of information and data, as I said, went to work crafting mission statements based on the information that was gleaned from the last work session. And we didn't set out to do this, but what we realized was that the iterations that we came up with kind of lived on this bandwidth between emotional and tactical. And I remember one of the first things I said to Dr. Keenan early on when we talked about mission statement was, and when I looked at the current statement, I'm like, yeah, you do that, but I feel like a mission statement needs to have more feeling. And we worked in that area, and that's why we have some that lean on that left side of that scale. More tactical is leaning, starts to kind of bleed into the what you do. And with that, we have options that we've considered that you all will work on this evening after we head out. But option one, to equip and empower students of all learning abilities to excel to their greatest potential. And when you look at the scale down here, we most certainly feel like that one kind of has that feeling. And as we go through these, you'll start to see how each, each word can really change the temperature of the whole statement drastically, and sometimes the meaning as well. And I'm going to go through these, and we have a summary at the end, so you can compare them all together, by the way. Option two for consideration is to provide individualized education that supports our students in achieving their full potential. And really, that focuses on that word, that word individualized. Option three for the mission statement is really pretty succinct: To provide students with the opportunity to meet their full potential. That's got pretty broad shoulders. And again, keeping in mind, as I said before, in your entire realm of communication, there's lots of opportunity daily with different audience personas and different types of communications to drill down and provide more context on tactical, deliverables, and things like that. So that's a pretty high-level statement. To provide students with the opportunity to meet their full potential. Option four, to support students in their success through specialized education. And this was really born from our team kind of looking at that word special and kind of hitting it head-on. I have a feeling that the current brand identity that is mostly comprised of three letters may have possibly been born from the idea of kind of skirting that issue and maybe historical baggage around special education and the word special. And we're exploring the possibility of hitting that head-on and talking about what that means. And in this context, it kind of works like individualized did in that previous sample, to support students in their success through specialized education, which really starts to kind of hit at the level of expertise and the depth of services and resources that Option five, lots of options, to equip and empower students to succeed through technical and special education. You know, as we introduced the technical education piece here, that moves us one a little bit towards the more tactical end of the spectrum between emotional statements Option six, to enable student success through technical and special education. I don't know how difficult it is or how easy it is to see the slide with all of them together, but I'll just give you a few moments, and if you look at these together, they started to feel probably similar, so I was reading through them, because they all exist in this realm that we think is the right area for this exploration. But hopefully, this comparison will provide some context for how some of these words and phrasings can really change the entire statement. I'll just give you a little bit with that. Most certainly, if anybody has any questions, ask away. Spent a lot of time with.
I have a question, and maybe it's limiting too much. Do we not need to limit this to St. Louis County on any of these statements, or is that just a given?
I think in the context of just the mission statement, that's a given. I think it will always exist around the name of the district and other things near it that that'll, we wanted to pull that kind of out of it. I don't think there's any risk of this getting into the wrong hands of somebody not knowing whose mission it is, you know what I mean? That's a good question.
I was just wondering, because we, at different times, whether it be charter schools, whether it be St. Louis City Schools, would they be, would they look, if we don't, if we don't define it like with St. Louis County, would that allow them to say, well, your mission statement?
Is the mission statement a legal obligation?
No, but it could, but it would be, I could see it coming back at us. I might be overly cautious here.
Well, I think that the, the mission statement, looking at it is, we're going to have other documents to say who we are, what we do, how we do it. That's where I think what we're saying is, and I think that's where we're, when we're talking with Magnetize, is that let's look at it so that it's like, what is our, what do we, what's the emotion around what we do here? As opposed to putting everything that we do into the mission statement, if that makes sense. And the feedback from the focus groups was, when we saw the mission statement, they get, nobody really felt a whole lot of feeling, but it was, I think we were trying to achieve, that we were going to put everything in what we're doing, but it really wasn't achieving from the reader's perspective about what do we want to do and educate? Because I think there was some confusion, are we a government agency? Are we, we work with county? And we're truly an educational system. So thinking in terms of that. Now, Dr. Cuneo, I want you to feel confident that we will, in the process of the logos and the branding and the information on the website, those are the things that we will make sure that as we talk about who we are, that's defined within that. And, you know what I mean? So we can, and in our title, it's Special School District of St. Louis County. We can put that in the titling of it, but it doesn't mean it needs to be in the mission statement. If that makes sense.
I agree. I think that everybody wants to be a part of anything that's successful. And I believe that when it comes to the politics of your question, Dr. Cuneo, I think that we focus on being the best we can be and do what we do very well, then it's inevitable that at some point in time, we probably will be confronted with expanding our search because we do what we do very well. And I think mission statement that we have to reflect those aspects of who we are, and the rest of that will take care of itself and we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But I think that our mission statement should reflect the progress of who we are as a special school district. If we do that and we do it well, that's the only important thing. The rest of it will pound itself.
Are we, are we going to be right, or are we talking about, or? We're going to, after, through this process, we're going to, Director Goodman and Dr. Bauer are going to kind of walk you through that you can, we're going to kind of do a quick round robin of like, what are your feelings around it? But any questions that you guys have in terms of words and definitions or anything like that?
Yeah, I really feel like it's an opportunity to have a statement that kind of is the soul of your organization. It answers the question why. And with an organization as complex as this, if you want people to immediately understand that, that answer to the question why, sometimes it's helpful to parse it down and focus on that. But as Dr. Keenan said, there will always be context around, around this, and that's what brand strategy is all about, and that's what team strategy is all about, is having a way to create a hierarchy in your communications and making sure there's valuable context around everything you do. So that's a great question. Other areas that we explored, the vision statement, which really you could think about that as where we want to be, what are we striving for, where do we want to go? And most certainly, well-crafted vision statements are almost always aspirational. And with that, we kind of explored a range of concepts here, and they kind of fell on this, this range of possibilities from aspirational to practical. And there's a little bit of a balance there for the vision statement for Special School District of St. Louis County, to look to achieve something, but to be careful about ownership and stakeholdership and outcomes and things like that. So there's kind of the balance that goes on there with some of these concepts. We've explored options on this as well. And our first concept for the vision statement is really pretty concise. Every student lives a full life, which I like that statement, because I don't know who would disagree with that or not want to see that happen. I would venture to guess that young folks who head into their college career with an eye toward special ed have that in their heart. I think it's something to strive for. Option two, our students live full lives as valued members of society. And that includes some phrasing that we've heard in some of the conversations that we've had, and most certainly in the last work session, too. Option three for the vision statement, every student realizes their fullest potential in life and in learning. So for each, each individual, there's a different set of outcomes, there's a different realm of possibilities, their potential. Option four, our students are able to live their best lives, which is a very broad statement. We have the word power in there, to kind of illustrate a closeness to the students we Option five, every student feels fulfilled and capable. So to me, those two words compared together in that one statement kind of carries two different things, right? Capable kind of aligns with academic skill set, fulfilled, could represent sense of belonging, kind of heading toward or reaching that potential, very personal word. Option six for vision statement consideration, every student is capable and feels empowered And here again, we have a summary slide that kind of compares them because experiencing them linear, in a linear way like that, they kind of start to run together by design. They're similar.
Phil, Paul, I listened to the focus groups that you held with everyone, and we had our own brainstorming here. And since our last meeting, I was doing some reading, and I came across sort of a term that I heard that I thought was a nice one as well. So I've taken it upon myself to edge of the chart, a 1A. We have option one, every student lives a full life. Can I suggest that another option, and what do you think about this? Every student lives a life of significance. Do you like that at all?
I like that, I like that word. We've talked about, you know, students, kids, a sense of belonging and making their own impact. That speaks to that contributing to society without sounding like we're trying to create worker bees for the nest here, right? So I like the personal.
Misfulfilled, you know, the improved fulfillment and improved. So I did take it upon myself to add that as a word, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. I like that word.
Is there a way we could read word number three? I like number three, but I don't feel comfortable when I say every student, which is singular. Then I've used their, which is plural. Then fullest, to me, ridiculous. Either it's full, you don't ever say it's fuller. Full is just seems awkward. I like every student realizes full potential in life and learning. If there's a there, there doesn't seem like an appropriate word.
And maybe when we talk about those later, you can literally mark that out on the board, you know, and then vote on that as your favorite, because I think that is a, it's better wording on that statement. Every student realizes full potential in life and learning.
I said before, it's amazing how a parsed-down statement like this can really change temperature with just a slight nudge like that. Keep going to leave you all room to work. Values was another area that we explored. So the current values for the district are these here: Accountability, collaboration, continuous improvement, equity, integrity, stewardship, and student success. All great, great things. Added to that, and I believe these were added in the last work session, Director Kelsey, these additional words on the right-hand column came up last time: access, equitable access, commitment to kids, and opportunity. And it was interesting to see in the work session that Director Goodman led last time, kind of how the preferences weighted on these different words. We've got, it might be hard to see on the screen here, but at the end of each word, we have the number of votes that each word received. So one person liked accountability, collaboration, it was three. Commitment to kids was five. When we started to look at these, we saw an opportunity to make this more concise, and Director Goodman's intuition was that three is probably a good digestible number on something like this, so we explored that direction. They're right here for the recommended values, which are, there are three of them: equity, commitment, and collaboration. And we didn't do it on this slide, but if you were to go back and look, you could park them with all of the others under each one of these.
What did you say, Paul? I'm sorry. If you go back.
If you were to go back and look at the full list, you could park, you could find a home for every one of the words.
Oh, under these, okay.
Under one of these, yeah, absolutely. So when we say equity, what we mean by that is, every student, regardless of learning ability or socioeconomic status, deserves access to the services they need to succeed. And for commitment, everything we do revolves around our commitment to students and their And in collaboration, we work with parents, students, partner districts, and the community to benefit students.
The smaller group who had a preview of this prior, we just loved the work they did on these values. We loved the ones they chose, we loved the way they described them underneath, and we would really love it if we didn't do any further work in this values area, because we think they've done a fabulous job.
I was very happy when I read those. Great people.
What we love about these is that they're all ownable for you guys right now, in a sense, but there's room for growth. You know, there's spaces to kind of move into and to broaden how you can fulfill each of those.
Like how, all this goes into both the tech schools and partner districts, all this, without having to.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I think Dr. Bauer had mentioned that there's even an opportunity here for operational measurement, in terms of operational excellence, in terms of these providing a scale for that, It's all in there. It's, you know, it's back here, but it's more parsed down, and it's three very distinctive buckets.
Magnetize really did a great job taking all this input from all these different places and really focusing some really great thoughts. And I think it'll be up to us now to choose which of the options they provided us, but you really gave us a great range, you listened to us, you manipulated it in different ways, and you really gave us some great options to go forward with.
Oh, thank you. Nice words. Like we said on the, on the last call, though, we do a lot of this work for a lot of different organizations, nonprofits, global brands. It really makes our job reviling our life easier when we're working with people whose hearts are in their work. And that was clear all along, in the focus group work, everybody who provided input and information. We're not, we're not fabricating marketing stuff here. We're helping you kind of refine your message, things you already know, to say in a more clear way.
Well, you really did, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think that's it. That's where we're at.
Yeah.
And thank you.
The next step is after we give you what our mission and vision are, you're going to meld that into the. to meld that into the actual graphics of the branding and the key positioning statements, right? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Nice job.
How the hard work of making decisions.
Yes. All right, Director Goodman. Yeah, so guys, we have this creation of a mission statement page that we handed out, okay? So I just wanted to point out to you that, you know, we developed together, as we said, our foundational belief, which is every student deserves the opportunity to achieve their full potential. So based on that, I want you to review again the mission page with the six options, so that if that is our foundational belief, that every student deserves the opportunity to achieve their full potential, which of these mission statements do you feel is the best representation of that belief? And I'm going to remind you about the tenants of a well-crafted mission statement that is on the second page. You wanted to articulate the purpose of the organization, to tell employees and stakeholders why we exist. It should state what sets us apart from other educational entities, which is why we had a little discussion in the earlier meeting, how in my mind, option three doesn't do that, because option three could be any school in the county. But it should be specific, short, sharply focused, and memorable, okay? So based on the foundational beliefs that we've all agreed upon, we're going to, in a minute, go up to the boards and vote with our dots, okay, on our two best mission statements that we prefer. Do you all need a little time to look these over, you know, and ponder a moment, or do you have your votes? So let's just, as long as we're standing up and doing it all at the same time.
How we do this? We're just taking two stickers and putting them on each other, or?
Yes, or two on one, if you feel strongly. So you get two votes. Dr. Paul, you think two votes is good, or should we look at...
Three votes.
You think? You think two votes is good, or should we... Okay. And then don't forget that the vision statement, the outcome of the realize, the mission you do... Okay, so... If you remember best, some of the examples we had prior, I mean, the ADA's example of the vision is a life free of diabetes and Alzheimer's, right? So it's very aspirational. It's, you know, we're all working very hard for this, you know, world and the future. Someone in our earlier statements had peddled the cure's vision is a life free of cancer. So anyway, if you could take a moment, you choose your favorite mission and corresponding vision, and you have two.
And Julie Rammel.
Oh, and Julie, you'll have to tell us. But don't tell us, because I want you to...
No, I'll text, I'll text Amy. How about that?
Okay. Or, yeah, or if you want to modify one, you can write it differently. We're definitely going to modify yours, Dan.
I think she thinks that, if you do it, write that one. All the time.
Your parents should have just done a vision, let me know, and remodel that.
Her parents, I think I'll work.
I'm the only evolving.
Julie, did you catch those changes Dr. Cuneo suggested?
I have a...
Yes, I believe so.
And then there's going to be an option 1A, every student lives a life of significance.
And you were going to rewrite things. Yes.
Yes, I love that word.
There were the two options. Is that what you're doing right now?
Yeah, I was getting to it.
I really like the "our" student word. And I'm putting it in the "our" series, I'm trying to be like the word, "our" student.
That would get rid of the "their."
Yes, right.
That was my problem with that.
I just realized that "their" full potential.
I think maybe you should have remembered, because you've been involved...
Yeah, I do like that.
And I think Dr. Paul as well.
That there didn't work.
Dr. Bauer, I think you should vote "well."
I should vote...
Yeah, I mean, you have the benefits of going back onto the information.
So I thought, we're doing...
Remember, yeah, we should have this. Okay. Yeah. Yes, somebody else write it. Get rid of "full," that bothers me, when people say "full."
And not "their," right? Because "their" is the...
Yeah, yeah, we're going to do that, because we're going to say "our" students.
Our, our.
Realize it. Are every student realized? Either way, I'm...
Did you want "their"?
No, we either have to have "our" students, or get rid of the "their." I'm willing to go either way.
Yep, I really like "our."
I'm living a dream, trying to find out what's in it from this table.
Yeah.
Isn't that weird? It's broken. Is that the table that always goes?
Every student, because it was a higher...
That's the table that we push down, and it pops up. That's why it's broken.
Every student realized the full potential. Or you get, we're going to get that, but if you've got that, I'll take that.
Three hundred and twenty-nine families have, or forty-three percent have chosen virtual instruction, four hundred and thirty-seven, which is fifty-seven percent, have chosen in-person instruction.
All right, and for the technical high schools, so just a reminder of our schedule for reopening, so students are going to return on January nineteenth, we're going to use that week as an orientation week, because our students have not yet had the chance to be in building. So we're going to bring in one group on Tuesday, the other group on Wednesday, that'll kind of be our test run for North Tech and South Tech. Then from there, the week after, we're going to have students come in two days a week, so a Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday schedule with a virtual Monday. And then after that, when we hit February first, we're in a transition to five days a week of in-person learning, so students will be coming in person five days a week. Keep in mind for the technical high schools, most of our students in junior and senior level programming, they did not have an option for virtual learning, because the nature of their programs were programs that have a certification that requires in-person, those students had the option of either coming in person or returning to their home high school. However, our exploration programs, they have the option of virtual learning. So at South, at South Tech, we only had eighteen, eighteen students who had a virtual option and chose to take it. At North Tech, we had a higher number of virtual learners, because we have our sophomore exploration program where all of them had a virtual option. We were also affording a virtual option to our graduating seniors, we didn't want to prevent them from continuing at North Tech their last semester before graduation. So currently, North Tech has a hundred and thirty-three virtual students. So special circumstances, we're running into scenarios where, due to student medical conditions, they're indicating that it would be, it would be difficult for them to access in-person instruction because of a diagnosed medical condition. Specifically, we're seeing issues with students with conditions like asthma, where they really have concerns about coming in person. We're handling those on a case-by-case basis. We're working through the 504 process, which would provide ADA accommodations for students if they have a diagnosed medical condition that impacts their ability to access their education, so impacts their daily functioning. So we're handling those on a case-by-case basis. Right now, we have about five students that we're working through that process with to find potentially an alternative virtual option. And then, students do have the option to return to their sending school for virtual instruction, instead of attending the technical high school. We're right at about what we thought we would see as far as the number of students dropped between North Tech and South Tech, we're right at about eighty-seven students who've chosen to return to their home high school. Keep in mind, in a normal academic year, at the semester, we'll have students who decide to return to their home high school for a variety of reasons. Either they decide the program that we're offering is not what they thought it would be, or they have other commitments, that our, our programming doesn't fit their schedule. So this is slightly more drops than we'd see in a normal year, but it's not astronomically higher. Next slide. So that was it, so just any questions if you had about reopening?
How many students did you say you had at South Tech for virtual students?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
I was just wondering, do you see this as having an effect in the future?
So, we already had, so for families who are choosing to return to the sending, the home high school, many of them were asking about can their student come back in August if circumstances change? And absolutely, we're saving a spot for those students in August. We are a little bit concerned about our ability to obtain, for those juniors, keeping them on track for certifications next year, it's still going to be a little bit rocky. The other thing that we're a little bit concerned about is we've never recruited students before in a virtual environment, and so, a lot of the means that we use to reach students, where we're coming to talk to them in classrooms, we don't have that opportunity in a virtual setting. We've done a lot of email campaigns and communication that way. Families are so inundated with email at this point, that it's really hard to bust through and reach the families to make sure they're aware of the opportunity. So we are looking at some alternatives, we're looking at doing some direct mailing to families in February, specifically targeting programs that are either lower enrolled or programs that have space, to try and reach families that might not be seeing our communication through the traditional means.
No, I was wondering what would happen next year?
Yeah.
Do we expect to have a drop in students, if we're not calling out for the high school?
At, at this point, South Tech is right about, as far as number of accepted students, they're on track. The difference is normally, we have a pretty deep bench as far as our waitlist goes, our waitlist is not as deep as it's been in years past. At North Tech, that's where we're really struggling, because very few students are in person for first semester, so we have seen a downtrend in applications at North Tech. We're really hoping to hit the ground running right now. As students came back for second semester, normally, we see an uptick this time anyway, because it's when our sending schools start their scheduling process, so students start thinking about next school year, so we're trying to make sure that we're keeping tech at the forefront through that. But we might see a little bit of a dip of enrollment next school year, because we've never recruited in an entirely virtually, virtual setting before, for education that's really meant to be in-person, hands-on.
I was just trying to pick up staffing in the past, because I'm out of key.
Yep, it, it looks like our junior numbers, as far as them retain, them matriculating into senior year, South Tech's enrollment right now is actually up from where they were last year. Last year, we were around seven seventy-five at this point, and South Tech is still over eight hundred, so they're much higher than they were last year. North Tech's about flat, North Tech's about where they were at this point last year. The other thing that we don't know is how many of those students who choose to drop are going to then, when they say they're going to come back in August, we don't know how many of them are actually going to follow through on that. But we are tracking all of that data.
Do we feel good, I'm sorry.
Just a thank you.
Do we feel good about the curriculum, that the people in the first year program will be able to transition to the second year?
Yes. And the students who only were with us for a semester, we feel like we do have some pieces in place to catch those students up.
Thank you. One point oh three is our equity plan presentation, and that is going to be with Dr. Bolton, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning and Accountability, and Dr. Mathlin, who is the Director of Equity.
President Cunio, Vice President Brown, Board of Directors, Dr. Kuhn, my name is Molly Bolton, I'm the Executive Director of Teaching, Learning and Accountability. This evening, Dr. Mathlin will be presenting our equity update, which will include our equity statement, as well as soliciting feedback from you guys on our equity framework. You guys have a copy of the PowerPoint, as well as the framework in front of you, to, to work through during this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. And so, as we look at the PowerPoint presentation here, and we look at the SSD core values, we know from our very, very first presentation of this evening, how vital and how important equity is. That center, cornerstone, that skeletal system, as we talk about a key foundation, just as it relates to the core value. The next slide here is very, very vital. If we talk about equality, equity, and justice, and so, this, this, this PowerPoint or this slide is great, because the visual that it shows, it shows that all three, all three students were able to see the game without, without support or accommodations, because the inequity was addressed, addressed. The systemic barrier was removed. Also, this is, when you look at this slide, or this, this particular slide in the PowerPoint here, you will see that you have students here who are a different race and also of different gender, and so, that's the true value here when we take a look at the slide. The draft of the SSD equity statement, statement, and so, it started as a definition, and then we dug deeper into analyzing and to making it into a statement. This statement has been seen and reviewed and received feedback from numerous groups, numerous groups multiple times. Educational equity exists when the intentional focus on learning outcomes, that access to each allocation of resources, ensure that each student, particularly those from historically underrepresented, underserved, and marginalized groups, excel through purposeful engagement, and rigorous and individualized instruction, and revelant educational experience, we recognize the importance of partnerships and operational work in supporting these outcomes. This statement here, again, has been reviewed by multiple groups and had an opportunity for feedback, and has been recrafted a couple of different times to get to this final piece where it is today.
It's very different than anything we've seen up until now. It's different from the equity definitions we've, we've spoken about as a board prior, right, from the point of departure, from what we've been tracking with you up till now.
I really appreciate your, next slide, the part two, as you were presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Except, I will ask, I mean, no one really thinks we can achieve justice, right? It's not really our role to achieve justice?
So, justice and social justice are two terms that are, are at times interchangeable. The thought is that if you don't have social justice, then the result is justice. What we are achieving is equity. In the, in the slide that Dr. Cunio spoke about here, the result of it is justice, because all the barriers were removed, but we are achieving equity.
Right, exactly. Yes. Okay. Do you want us to talk about the definition now, or would you like us to wait until you finish this first part of this presentation, Doctor?
Um, we can wait, just for a little bit here, and then we'll get into that, that definition.
We want to.
Oh, you are so kind, you are so kind. Thank you, guys. Oh. Brought the fresh air.
And you're all.
Great.
Okay, can we breathe again?
Yes, yes, yes.
Fresh air.
Okay, all right, so the framework, uh, the framework that you guys have there, you guys have a copy of the framework here, and this draft of the framework here sets as a, serves as core values, evidence-based ideas, and concepts and tools designed for people in multiple stages in their understanding of equity. You guys have seen this framework before and seen pieces of the framework, and so, over the next coming months, we will refine the framework to ensure that it provides a common language, and vision, and approach for driving change at every level. There are a couple of questions that I want to delve into and ask you guys tonight around the framework, and so, I do want some feedback around the framework as we delve into just a couple of questions. And so, you guys have the history of the framework in front of you, and I will tell you that that history, as it relates to, to feedback and working with a committee, has really been scaled down from a large amount of pages to the single one page, really capturing that, uh, what the history is there. So as you look at the history there, the question is, based on the history, are there any nuances that we should be aware of when moving forward with the work? And I will ask that question to open up, based on the history, are there any nuances that we should be aware of when moving forward with the framework?
I would only suggest that we need to be sure that the framework is actionable, because historical nuances are that we did a lot of talking and a lot of reiterating, and we've never really had a good plan forward, so.
Right, make sure it's actionable.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that too, because, you know, when you look back, I'm, I'm glad that Dr. Mathlin captured the history about the reports that, you know, the equity reports and studies, but it really, that's one of the things is that, moving forward, making this actionable and alive in everything that we're doing and making our decisions based on, those things are helpful, but it's also kind of like, moving it so that we have a product, or we have a strong definition around where do we want it.
And also moving it, thank you, Dr. Kuhn, and moving it also allows us to really create the narrative, set the narrative. And so, that's what we want to be able to do at this point, from the 2014 to 2016, and then 2018 study.
So, six years. Yeah.
Thank you. The next question here, from the big picture and the ultimate goal that you guys have there in the framework, the big picture and the ultimate goal there, does this section align with what the Board of Education considers to be the big picture and the ultimate goal for equity in the school district?
Page two of the.
Thank you.
They're.
So again, does this section align with what the Board of Education considers to be the big picture and the ultimate goal for equity in the district?
I think it's a lot more straightforward than your definition.
More understandable, and I think, I think, I think this is good. You all think.
If I go back a little bit, and I'm slow, but, and nuances, the thing that came to me was genuine relationships, you know, be able to accomplish most of the things that we're talking about, it has to be a genuine relationship established, the positive data and relationship. So much of the past has been part of collecting data and statistics, that tend to represent various entities that we find ourselves interacting with, but we have not necessarily always had genuine relationships. And I think that once we get to that point of, of understanding the necessity of having genuine and creating genuine relationships with individuals, then the equity portions of it becomes a lot more tangible.
Thank you. Under questions to consider, when we take a look at the why, what, and how, the why, what, and how, which is on page five, why, what, and how? What do we need to consider as we look, look through, look through at the processes with an equity lens? So when we, when we examine the why, what, and how through an equity lens, what needs to be considered, if anything?
Can I go back to the equity definition for a second?
Yes, yes.
I, I hate to sound, sometimes I get moving when it comes to grammar, so I apologize, if I couldn't stand fullest. But, uh, that's what happens, I had a fifth grade nun that used to break my knuckles whenever I ate something wrong. But wouldn't, your comma on the second line, educational equity exists when the intentional focus on learning outcomes, wouldn't the AM, the access to an allocation, I was trying to diagram that, and I couldn't diagram it, that's why it's put in the middle of the column.
Intentional focus on learning outcomes, and educational equity exists when, and intentional focus?
No, when an intentional focus on the learn, on learning outcomes, and the access to the allocation of the resources ensure that each student. The reason why I would do that, I was trying to figure out, wasn't that a compound subject? I apologize, it's one of these sicknesses.
That's okay, that's okay, if we want, if we want to, if we want to make sure that's not a compound subject and.
No, I think it is. That's why I want to, that's why I want to get rid of the comma and put an "and" there.
And access.
Yeah.
To allocation.
And access to allocation.
Then I think it sounds great.
Okay.
Sorry.
Great.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. When an intentional focus on learning outcomes, the access to comma and, and allocation of resources.
When an intentional focus on learning outcomes and the access, since those are the topics.
Yeah. And the access.
I'm sorry, I don't think the definition has enough clarity at all. I think it's all over the place, it's not clear, it's not succinct. If this is something we're going to live by, I mean, what is the purpose of the definition for you, Dr. Mathlin?
So, the, the equity definition is, is, well, equity statement, really serves as that, that staple stone, that piece for the district that, that the district can stand by, the district can, can, can use as that, almost, that piece that when a person looks and they see the definition, or they see the statement, that will really capture SSD, Special School District.
I don't, I don't think it does that, but I know you've gotten input from lots of people. Help me, I don't understand the last sentence at all, what do you say, what are we recognizing?
Well, Special School District recognizes the importance of partnerships and operational work in supporting these outcomes, and so, the, the outcomes that were mentioned up above, such as purpose for engagement, rigorous, individualized instruction, and revelant educational experiences, Special School District recognizes the importance of partnerships and operational work in supporting those outcomes, then also.
But what's operational work, what does that mean?
So that means working at the total operation, from finance to human resources, to every piece of the organization.
Might be nice if that were clear, but, okay. I'm not buying into this at all, personally, I'm one person. I, I don't think it's clear, I don't think it's succinct, but if you feel like this guides your work, and if everyone else does too, obviously, I'll defer to everyone else.
But there'd be a better way maybe to, sort of block of text, I don't know, bullet points or something, that should, might, right now, what I'm seeing is a bunch of words.
What, what I was thinking was, you know, what we could do is something similar to what we did last year, so if we are looking at maybe taking this back to the committee to be able to craft a couple of different options for that, so that we can kind of do what we did with the vision and mission, and it's good to hear your feedback on these pieces, because, you know, we can take sections of this, we can condense it a little bit, expand some other pieces of it, but giving some options to you, one of the things that I would like is that, because this is such, this is such key work for decisions as we're going into the next several months, that if we brought this back to you at the business meeting in January, at the end of January, then you can be able to kind of solidify which one, we can do the same thing, so we can continue to move forward with this process to move it into the actionable statement. Because what I'm hearing is, the other pieces of the draft, it's the, it's the definition, it's the statement that we needed just a little bit more clarity on.
I mean, this isn't an equity definition, this is a guiding principle, right?
Right.
I mean, the definition of equity is, we came through on our value statement, which is every student, regardless of learning ability or social status, deserves access to services they need to exceed. That is the definition of equity, in my mind. This is some sort of, I don't know, maybe it's an SSD guiding principle for equity, you know what I'm saying?
I, I, I understand what you're saying. If, if it is not the definition of equity, it is Special School District's definition of equity or statement around equity. So I see what you're saying, the difference between the equity pieces there.
And before, we've been in a more classic, you know, what is the definition of equity? That's all the conversations that we've always had, have been around, how do we define equity?
Right.
So.
What, what I would suggest, though, knowing that the vision and mission just has come through, you know, within this last evening, that if we looked at, brought this back to the committee about, this is what the board is saying, it'd be nice to have that, if this is our equity commitment, having that back in here, but also, taking in the key pieces of what we're looking at with the statement and definition, and making sure there is an embedded, it's embedded throughout the draft, which a lot of it is, and it explains it, and it's getting back to thinking about what the purpose of our vision and mission is, it's not always telling us what we do, but it's like, what is the aspirational essence of it, and then, if this is one of our core values, putting that into this document would be a nice carryover from what we're looking at with.
Well, I agree with you, because I think we're, we're jumping the, we're jumping the gun right here, there were a jump, jump in the room, we've got, we're doing this before we make the final decision on our values.
Yeah.
Before we make the final decision on the mission and vision. Not that I don't think any of this is well done, and I do, and I really want people for their work, but, if we're going to use equity as one of our values, and if we use the way it was written, by magnetize where they give it a definition, maybe we should be using that in here too.
Right.
So we would have a consistency. And then, going on and say, and what this means for us, is for us, SD, equity definition, plug this in there. But that's the way I would see it flow.
Because the document, and I don't want to jump too far into it, because I like how you laid out the presentation today about asking the clarifying question, but we do talk about the why, the what, the how, you do talk about essential questions. I think all those pieces frame it out for us, and I don't want to speak for the entire board on that either, so hearing from you on that, but, that's my only thing, that's the one thing I've heard the most from the board, is the definition and, or the statements kind of getting in the way of where we're at with the whole entire document.
Yeah, can we, can we keep going on and kind of hold this in abeyance right now, until we get our values and mission statement, and then kind of see if we can fold that in there?
I, I like that, because I, I actually have a more practical, back to the why, what, and how question to ask. So, you know, because we're, we're looking at this as page four.
Yeah.
Which is to me very confusing, I mean, really, in the end, the, the what that I want to get to is a situation where, you know, we're very clearly identifying equity issues, like eighteen students at South Tech are going virtual, it's a hundred and, how many are doing it in, in North Tech?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
No, a hundred and thirty-three at North.
Yeah. That's eighteen at South Tech, that's an equity issue. And, and now, there are many mitigating situations, you know, situation, there's pandemic, there's a lot of things, but what I would like to move away from is identifying that equity issue, we didn't really identify it as such, but that's to me, an equity issue, and then shrugging and saying, well, okay, let's move on with our conversation. Where I want to go to is, you know, identifying that, and then saying, and so, here's what we think we can do to fix that, and I don't pretend to have that solution in mind, especially with the issue I just identified now, with virtual learning, I don't, I don't pretend to mean that these are simple issues, but that's where I want to get to. So we say, well, this is, this is an equity issue, and here's what we propose to do to address that now and in the future. That's where I want to get to, for, you know, the practical aspect, and I, I mean, I think we can spend a lot of time talking about the definitions, but in the end, that's what I'd really like you guys to come, to, to us as a board, and say, here's what we want to do.
And did I hear you saying this, why, what, and how is, more in line with what you're looking for?
Well, I, I don't, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't know, because this is a diagram, and I, I don't know that that helps.
No, I'm sorry, Dr. Mathlin, the why, what, and how.
Oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm all over the place. I'm on page four.
I'm sorry, page five.
Also, I'm sorry, I don't know yet. Thanks.
There you go, that page.
I mean, I agree, and I think that's the essence of this, is to make sure that when we do identify equity in our system, what are we going to do to address it? And, and that's where I feel like this is, the difficult work is, how do we make sure when, whoever's making decisions, or whoever's understanding the data in front of them, that we are presenting it and we're focusing in on, where do we see inequities, and how do we address it, so that it's not everybody's equal, going back to the visual, we are going to reduce those barriers, we want to eliminate those barriers, but I, I feel like the equity pieces and, and the defin, I mean, not the definition, but the, 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 the plan really kind of helps, how do we facilitate that within our organization? But I, Dr. Asner, I, I agree, I mean, we, it's about, it's, this is about the paper, but what does it mean when it, when we're in the process of making decisions, and that there are actionable things that are happening to change the outcome.
With timelines.
Yeah, we can make the goals instead of intent, but we can, we can have intent of accomplishing a lot of things, and until we actually make it a goal.
Right.
Then we don't set forth the measurements that we will have to be able to measure our attainment of goals, you know, and I believe that what we're looking at here are verbiage that gives us guidelines that come into play, that when the recognition of inequity, as you may have mentioned, and personally, you mentioned about differences in the verb class. My question to you would be, you say it's, it's an issue of equity, well, to what degree? Is it just the numbers themselves, or is it maybe conditions that creates the numbers?
Well, sure, so, but again, we have, we have to have someplace where we start to, I mean, that's, that maybe is part of the debate, but I'll say again, where, where I want to get to it at some point is to say, well, you know, we noticed that we have more students in one area, in one school district, who are, you know, or maybe fewer students are accessing a particular service, and so, here's what we can do to help with that, whether that means now today helping them access it, or again, I don't, I don't pretend to oversimplify it, it's such a complex issue, but whether it is to say something like, well, so, in the summer, maybe we'll offer the students in North Tech an additional time to come in and make up the work, so that they can do this, that would be an excellent idea.
Or we could offer the kids at North Tech different vocational classes, that may be of more interest than their current ones would have. We may be teaching the same thing at two different schools.
Sure.
But there may be a difference in reference to how there, those particular classes are perceived. But there may be a difference in reference to how those particular classes are perceived in reference to the number of kids who say, hey, I'm not interested in that.
Right. So those, again, I'm looking for more, if you will, action points. Again, that's, but that was not, that was not answering the question, that was.
So, at the risk of wordsmithing, because I'm not interested in distinctions, it's a lot of difference. But I think this is truly different. So ensure that each student, particularly those from historically underachieving groups, because we're interested in achievement, right? Our job is achievement. It's not in the justice of representation or underserving or marginalized. We are working towards those historically underachieving groups and helping them excel. To me, that again is more direct, it's more specific to our goal. It's words like that in here that really, that lost me.
And the words like that in the definition that lost you?
Yeah.
Okay, or the statement.
Set later, when you go through your definitions, those are the ones, those are the terms you define. Underrepresented, underserved, and marginalized were later on.
Did he hit this again?
That's a very, 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 very bad.
I know, that's why.
Particularly those historically underserved, underrepresented, underserved, and marginalized. That basically covers the criteria of what you're talking about.
We're focusing on academic achievement, right? I mean, that's what our job is, is to help underachieving kids achieve. Whether it's because they're underrepresented, underserved, marginalized, whatever, our job is to help them who have historically underachieved do better. Is my answer, but. Wordsmithing probably isn't helping you.
I thought it's our definition of those terms.
They are, they're on page.
They're on page five. So to kind of move it along, so let's get back to, I think we've heard about the definition that that, and I appreciate the clarity on those pieces of it. Let's go into the why, the what, the how, which was on page five, get your feedback on that, and then the next two areas. So we can get your feedback, and then we can start to kind of hear where you're thinking to go with it and really make it align with what the board really wants.
So as far as the why, what, and how, what do we need to consider as we look through the process of why, what, and how within equity lens? So when we look at the why, what, and how on page five, with an equity lens, is there anything that needs to be considered there, feedback?
I like the why, I like the sentence, it's perfect. The other students deserve access to high-quality education, post-secondary outcomes. The post-secondary outcomes are a huge part of the future, both at the technical high schools and then for the kids graduating more or, you know, they, they, so forth. So I like that a lot. The framework, so the framework is the big thing that we're all rolling around about, right?
The statement.
Once it gets pretty, then the true reward will, yeah.
I guess.
Not all, slide, let's slide. Can you go back to that slide second?
So as we look at the indicators of progress and success, now from the why, what, and how, the indicators of progress and success there on page six, do these indicators support what we consider as progress and success?
I think we're missing the biggest one, which is student outcomes, improved student outcomes. It doesn't even, progress and success is improved student outcomes. And I don't see that anywhere in the list.
Thank you.
Somehow putting in all of these pieces.
So indicator isn't a word, right?
Right, okay, right.
So like the individuals who are underrepresented, marginalized, and others are part of the decision-making process about.
I, yeah.
To me, that means part of their IEP, part of their, when they get to tech school, moving forward in their path, you know, choosing their next bunch of classes, that post-school goal, why they're in the tech school. And, yeah, back to being part of their IEP process.
Dr. Macklin, I want to apologize if you're frustration in my voice, but I'm concerned that we could be heading down the same way that we've done in the past, which is we try to serve too many, you know, too many masters. There's too many things we're trying to do, we're all over the place, we're too broad. That's why we've never made progress over the last six years. So we need to stay focused, we need to, you know, what community is it? What is the reason we're serving them? You know, to me, we've gotten a little too broad in a lot of areas, and I want to make sure that we're in an actionable, you know, we move forward in an actionable way. And I fear that we're getting away with that with some of this.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. We're what, six months in, so we won't, it won't take us six years to get there.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to the last piece there. The guiding principles here, guiding principles. Here on page seven. What are your thoughts on how to make these guiding principles actionable? Again, what are your thoughts on how to make these guiding principles actionable?
Do we have any kind of training modules or professional learning for the staff based upon equity?
That's what we're going to develop.
Yeah, I mean, I think delivering these, you know, through that professional training and probably posting them and, you know, constant reminders and really have to get it replicated in all the sections.
It's building the foundation around how we provide that and then branching it out into the professional development. Supporting, looking at student outcomes, looking at how we can support our students, not only looking at it from the framework of, and Dr. Macklin has done some of this work with some of the staff already in our FSC schools, which was previously supported by Cambio, you know, those type of things. That, you know, looking at how do we, how do we have expectations for students? How do we, how do we support our students? And what does that mean in terms of looking at the culture and the climate to support students and all the students in U T R schools? And having those conversations. Because it's really, because teaching is such a personal aspect to everybody's life and really working on how do we, how do we support and understand? And ultimately, everybody having high expectations for our students, no matter what their outcomes come from.
Can I go back to the indicators of progress? What you had said, Anne. I was wondering, is there a way, if I'm going to find out that I'm succeeding, I would like to be able to say that I succeeded by raising app scores or raising standardized S scores in these groups as compared, in other words, I would want to know that these groups are now approaching the norm, approaching the norm of what our other kids are. I would also like to have a measure in there that talks about disproportionality. Because that's one of our big issues, and when we talk about marginalized or underrepresented groups. In fact, one of the ways we could help support this would be to put some of the monies we put into disproportionality into this. But I'd like to know a measure that what we're doing is succeeding in that. So somehow, if we could have a measurement on academic progress, or gains in academic progress, because they're going to be starting lower, I'd like to know what their gains are as compared to other groups. I'd also like to know if there's been a decrease in disproportionality during these times. And those would be measures that would show me that we have embedded equity and we have actually made some inroads in this. And I think too concrete, I mean.
Well, I think that in what you're saying in that situation, what comes to my mind is that given the services that we offer, and there still is a home district that each of these students, when you start talking about the measurements, the app scores, the stuff of that nature. You know, if I'm going to teach you a particular craft, then can I actually measure or expect to be able to gain that success based upon another institution's input, or lack of? I mean, if we in turn did that, what I'm seeing is, just like we in turn stopped the all-day classes because kids, for example, wanted to be in our environment on an all-day basis, and we stopped that, then your question to me then would say that we would then take upon reopening those opportunities for those kids to be in our environment opposed to their home school environment. Because the home, we're partnering with them by offering certain specific things. Now, when it comes to those kids that have special needs that are either physical or psychological, then, you know, there's a whole different measurement that comes about that has nothing to do, in my opinion, with Desi's grading of map or something else. So I'm not sure that we can measure beyond what we in turn are involved with that child to provide and that family.
Yeah, and I think it's a measurement versus baseline, as Dr. Cunha said. Where they were, then we give them these extra supports, and how are they doing now?
And move up, I'm not telling you that.
It's not against the dissonance.
I'm not even saying they go back to quote, what is normal. I just want to see a percentage of change that shows.
Well, I think that comes, and I think that you can appreciate this, Ben, and that you and Dr. Yolben, it comes from an environment. You know, basically, we all are, students are made from our environment. If we're around progressive environments and have lots of different other information in our basic environment supplied to us, then chances are we'll get better prepared than someone who does not have access to that, to the environment and that support that comes from that environment.
But can we go back to that wonderful cartoon that was at the very beginning? As you said, we can provide equity. I can't provide justice, that's out of my, that's out of my area. I can't knock all the barriers down and say they don't exist. But what I can do is figuring that those barriers exist, that there are certain things there. What I can do is provide supports at different levels depending upon the needs.
Mm-hmm.
What I would like to see is that if I provide those supports, does it work?
Right.
Because if not, why do it? I mean, I, we've done a lot of things in the past, and we spent a lot of money, but they never showed they worked. I would like to say that if we're doing this, that we should do it because in the end, it benefits those kids.
And we're measuring that through academic achievement, is that all right?
Right. And, and the, and the disproportionality. I want to know who gets this one, who doesn't, because that's a real big issue.
Or by identifying, you know, the students who are having academic challenges with learning disorders, mental disability, brain disorders.
I'd also like to see as a measure dropouts. You know, that's one of the big issues that we have, especially in some of our north county areas,
Mm-hmm.
that a kid has special needs, they don't, you know, while we may provide services till they're 21, they're gone by 16, they're gone by 15. It would be nice if we're having an equity jump, if this program is to work and we're providing the additional supports. I'd love to know that I've kept those kids in school, or the number of days that they're attending is better than it was. Because those, and I hate to sound real concrete, but those are things that I could measure. And at the end, I can say, look, see, it works. Not that any of this stuff here is not important, but it's not a measurement.
And I was going to say that if we go to, we go to.
Slide nine, please.
Yeah, we go to slide.
Nine. Slide nine.
We go to slide eight, one of the follow-up steps from this is to go back and to work with the C15, really to work to establish process and accountability. And you will see that as we, and those will be those measures that you will be able to see from there. And so, as we talk about next steps. And so, that was one of the processes, to receive feedback today and go back and do that. And so you can have that laser-like drill-like approach and to be able to see those measures.
Well, I mean, I think you got it, got rolled into it. The idea is being, again, if we're talking about, for example, bias of assessment, evaluation, reporting, so forth, I just want to make sure that if we're, again, I think you were just addressing that. If there is, if we're realizing that there is a difference in terms of how we're, you know, how often finding kids, we need help geographically, between different school districts. I just want to make sure that we're doing, if we realize, hey, we're not catching those kids, then we then put our resources into finding them. That's essential. I think you were, you were basically just saying.
Thank you. And so again, next step would be to take the revisions here back to the C15, and then to continue to work on tool development to flesh it out. And then to develop a rollout plan for the district, bring final approval back to the board. And then once again, to be able to begin the rollout plan. So we are just in, you know, still stages here, there are still stages here as it relates to the framework here. And so we're excited to get the feedback today, excited to get the feedback today, and then to board with the next steps.
I think it's a great first step. Do you have a timeline on when you're going, when we'll get a draft back again?
Like I said, at the next board meeting, we'll get some tweaking of it, bring it back to you guys again until you're feeling a little bit more comfortable. I don't want to let up on it because I want to keep.
And I also feel that you were at a disadvantage. Because the first slide, you had our values. Guess what? Those values aren't going to be the values we have anymore.
Well.
You know, I mean, they're going to be incorporated in those. I mean, it's not that we're ignoring those values, but that's not what we're saying.
Right.
The part of those values that we are now espousing is an equity value, which we have defined. We're asking you to do an SSD definition before we even defined it for you. So I thought you were at a disadvantage. I think this should be much more helpful for you.
I will say though, Dr. Macklin has, you know, come into the district and really has really understood where we need to go with things. There isn't a real whole bottom road map in this role, because this is the one role that I've seen in other districts. It's really truly created within where have we started to do some things, but also defining things in a strong way. And I think that, you know, it's a difficult role to have, is to how do you bring everybody together to present to someone. Such, and it's such an important role and definition around what we're going to be doing.
And Director Gimm, and I will go back to your point. I think it is definitely formidable to be able to develop a framework and a definition that relates to SSD, because that's when you have the oscillating, evasulating, and aren't able to stay on the same page and see the course through. All right, and so that allows us to be able to do those key pieces for them.
So we've, I took some notes, you know, I'm sure Dr. Bolton did too, and we'll work through some of the tweaking of it for, and bring it back for the board in January. And we'll work through some of the tweaking of it for, and bring it back for the board in January. So at our business meetings, they're generally smaller snippets. So you will all have it, won't be too much changes, but we're going to be adding it, kind of tweaking some of it and then being able to get any more like, okay, what else do we need to do? So we'll keep refining it until the board feels confident around what we're going to adopt. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maxlin. Appreciate it. All right. And we have one final presentation. And Doug Austin is going to be presenting two things. So the first part of the presentation is about enterprise resource planning bid. This is really one of the goals that we were looking at starting last year. It's to integrate a, a system that is fluid within SSD. And he'll talk about the different nuances worth it. Currently, we do have a HR or it's a payroll system or it's a system that we utilize here within it. But we wanted to make sure that we had more of this fluidity between human resources, payroll, um, and all of our operational pieces. So, um, he's going to talk a little bit about that bid. And then he's going to go into the five-year technology plan. And I want to make sure that you all are aware of where we're currently wanting to go so that when we start talking about budgets coming forward, it's important for you to be informed about what is the five-year plan. Okay? So.
Doug Austin, Chief Technology Officer, President Cunio, Directors of the Board. Um, as Dr. Keenan had mentioned earlier, we, we're looking at ways of improving the efficiencies and the, um, abilities of all of our operational staff to work together um, within all of our various tasks that need to be taken care of to support the students and, and the operations of the district. So our current system has a lot of, um, areas that are not quite as efficient because it wasn't really designed with education in mind. It was, it's more of a business package and not so much an education package. And because of that, there are certain aspects of the system that did not work for us the way it was designed. And we had a lot of manual processes to make up for those components. So, um, that allowed, and that also caused us to have lots of auxiliary and supplementary pieces of software that various departments were using in addition to the main software package, which related, which resulted in dual entry, manual overhead, comparing back and forth between two different systems to make sure they're correct, which was a lot of lost time and effort. So we started looking at ways that we can have a single unified system to pull everything together with, with an eye towards fitting our processes the way that we need to run them and not trying to force our processes to work in the way the software was designed. Um, next slide, please. Um, so we put out the bid, uh, the, the summer, several various vendors were contacted and we sent out a bid request and we received several bids back. And, um, based on all of those bid reviews, we went off of criteria. The first thing that we did was we formed a focus group made up of all the different departments that had to utilize the software. And we talked about what limitations existed in the current package and what they needed in a newer package that we're, we're missing. Um, we put all that criteria into the bid and then we reviewed the bids of all the vendors, making sure that they hit the criteria for all of the components that we needed. We didn't want to have, um, uh, multiple software packages at the end. So we're looking for a vendor that could hit as many of those requirements from all the different areas of operations that included human resources, payroll, finance, purchasing, and, uh, inventory control. And then, once we had the vendors that met most of the criteria that we needed, we set up a series of webinars with those same focus group members to review how that software worked and compare that to what our business processes were. And we gave those vendors specific examples of work processes that we went through and we had them demonstrate how that would be done in the software. Next slide. Okay. So the first big package, um, was from our current vendor, actually. Um, and they bid all of the components that we were missing when we first put this solution together. We didn't necessarily utilize all of the components. So some of the features that we were missing, we, we didn't go with. One of the reasons we didn't go with those packages when we reviewed them originally, they didn't fit our processes. And those particular groups said, "We don't want to use that piece of the software." But this time, we wanted everything to be together and hope that newer versions after so many years would be a closer fit. So we had them bid. Now, um, my initial thought was if we stay with the same vendor, um, surely there'd be some kind of a, um, price discount because we're loyal customers and, and, you know, it's just an upgrade and additional licenses instead of buying a whole new system from scratch. Does not turn out to be the case. Um, the, uh, the overall cost for the switch, um, um, over the, um, over the process of the new licenses, professional services to set up the new version and, um, moving, migrating data from our current system to the newer system weighs in at about $5.3, $5.27 million.
And that's with the current?
That, that was with the same vendor that we, that, um, we have the current software package for. Again, this is, um, their newer package with a bunch of other modules added in that we don't currently have a license to meet all of the criteria that we said we were missing in the current package.
So if I may, Doug, um, so the top part shows what we currently have, correct?
Correct.
And then everything below it is what we were looking to add into, to, that's not currently in the top, the top part of the versions that we need.
Correct.
And the additives for the $5.2 million.
And then total.
All together, $5.27.
So it's part of what we already have?
$1.3 million is what we currently would have and then.
$4.27.
Yeah. And so the total would be the.
I see. The difference. Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. So how much of this is the annual subscription fees on, on, for the new software?
So, um, the annual subscription fees would come to about $1 million of that.
That's, that's for the current.
And then yet in the bottom, it's about another $27,000 on the annual piece.
And then the rest is implementation.
The implementation piece where the.
But these were also things that are needed that are missing from our current system. But we're utilizing other systems to, so this is kind of like patching it at the patchwork right now.
Correct. Yeah. So there would, there would be, there would be costs that we are already paying for other packages that we would cease to pay because it was incorporated into this system with, with their packages.
But we would be spending the $1.3 regardless, right?
Correct.
If we kept it the same?
Yes.
Yeah. Who else did we look at?
All right. Um, next slide. So the next one we went to, um, that met all the requirements that we had. Again, multiple vendors bid, but a lot of them had pieces that they, um, did not bid or said that you'd have to go through a third party or wasn't applicable at all with their software package. So, um, we wound up with, uh, these two vendors that marked all of the categories that we put, all the criteria that we put in our. And this one is, uh, ALEO. Um, and, um, total cost for implementation and subscription fees for ALEO is about $800,000. Um, and then the annual cost going on for year two and, and following years would be $363,580,000.
And that encompasses all of the things that we were requesting at the top in the last slide and the bottom. It encompasses those bottom parts, right?
Wait. So that's so much cheaper.
$800,000 or $5,000? Yeah, I know.
But, uh, it's, uh, beyond the, the, the cost difference. Are there any practical differences in terms of software, which will be better for you guys?
So, um, in, in going through, um, um, the demonstrations between the two software packages, again, the, um, N4 Lawson, um, system is designed for, um, large enterprise corporations. Um, it's, it's their, for example, their, um, asset management, uh, component piece is designed for, um, very large distribution companies. Their, uh, their supply chain piece is designed for, um, for-profit, um, um, supply chain businesses. So it's, it's, um, the, the packages geared around business and, um, SEC compliance and.
Healthcare organizations.
Healthcare organizations, uh, compliance. So it's the, one of the big, the big market that, uh, they, um, have most of their customers in is, is large healthcare providers. So, um, their, their system is very complicated, is very powerful. And in many cases, it's, it's not necessarily geared for education. ALEO, on the other hand, is, um, a operational software package that was designed for K through 12 education. And that's one of the core differences between the two. Their, their price for K through 12, um, customers and it's designed around K through 12 customers. Now, um, I wasn't, uh, I wasn't present when the original software package was selected um, years and years ago. But in many cases, there are, there are aspects about special school district that didn't necessarily conform to a lot of the K through 12 software packages that were available at that time. There are areas that, that were too complex for that, um, software package to run properly. So it was very important when we saw this difference is, um, I, I didn't, I didn't want to say, well, let's just throw out Lawson because it's so much cheaper. Let's look at them, have them go through these new versions of their software and these additional packages that we didn't license before and see how that works for us um, in the scenarios that we give them. And then let's compare ALEO to the same thing. And if we see anywhere there were, there's a significant limitation with ALEO that we would not be able to, um, handle within our process and that would force us, again, back into some manual process or workaround outside of their software, then we know that this isn't the direction that we need to go. Um, and then, you know, again, the software, the newer versions, additional packages, additional features that Lawson was prescribing, maybe different, maybe better, maybe more flexible, and they may work better for us. So let's, let's compare the two side by side. But what we found was, um, the interface for the Lawson software, a lot of people found it very intimidating. There are lots of moving parts. It was very complicated. Um, there's lots of open, um, answers to, to the questions that we asked, like, well, yeah, you could do that. Um, there's lots of different ways of doing that, but not, with no real concrete, specific, well, this is exactly how that works and flows. Or you'd have to make some kind of a change here to make that work is the only answer that we're getting from Lawson on it. Whereas with the ALEO package, they said, oh, yeah, we do that all the time because we have other customers in Missouri that have the same accounting structure. So the, um, the Missouri accounting codes and all of the requirements for ESSA are already built into, um, our accounting package. So you don't have to build a new structure and a system because it's, it's built in. And we already have our state reporting capability. So the information will come out of the system the way the state of Missouri will accept it because we already have school districts in the state of Missouri that are using the software package. It's already been worked out. Whereas with Lawson, they would say, well, you could, you know, there's a designer where you could design that and build that, but you'd have to do that yourself. Or we charge $225 an hour and it would be 500 hours worth of work for us to do that.
So just, just to summarize all that, it's, it's, I also feel like ALEO is practically speaking a better program for the school.
That's what our, that's, that's what our focus group, uh, told me, that we went through everything. We asked questions, we had, uh, follow-ups, we went through and we gave them specific scenarios. And what I asked everyone to do is think of something that's hard to do in the current system that comes up a lot, that causes you to waste a lot of time. And ask them specifically how you do it in the new software. Um, and the answers that we got back from ALEO were much more readily accepted by the staff that actually had to do those tasks than the answers that we got from Lawson for the new software package.
And do you think it automates paper, some paper to pen things we had done before, right?
Correct. Yeah. That was one of the key things that we put into our requirements is all of the paperwork processes or manual processes that we're doing or moving things physically from one person's desk to a next. We wanted that to be a workflow that was in the software itself and that we're doing this thing and then typing it into the software in addition to what we're doing to make it work.
I think the other part of this too is, and, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the understanding is how do you make this much more of a customer-friendly interaction? Because right now, if you need to find out any information, you have to call, you know, the insurance department to find out information about where you're at in those pieces. You know, there are, this system, you can go on there, log in, you got your own, you find out where you're at. It's interactive with you, which is much more where we should be. This does also impact because, to your point, Director Goodman, when we aren't up to speed with what other agencies are doing, they're not going to bid on us because we're too slow and complicated with our process. And so we don't, in particular with insurance, health department, with our health insurance, we don't, we miss out on a lot of bids because we are still literally paper, fill this out, send it in, have so many inputs. So it's impacting not only just the staff inside and the customer service, but it's also financially, how do we get better rates for our health insurance?
Next slide.
Any downside to ALEO? Right now, they all just.
Um, everyone was very pleased with the, with the demonstration that they gave. Um, now, uh, I, I do believe that, um, we're one, we're one of their larger districts. You know, if we, if we decide to award them with the bid, we will be one of their larger districts. Um, we will be the largest district in Missouri, obviously, that they have. Um, but they, but they do have some other larger districts up back east that they, um, have their package.
Many districts in Missouri.
Yeah. And, and many districts in Missouri. Um, and we contacted, uh, all of the districts that they listed on their, um, references. And everyone that we talked to was very pleased with, with their, um, with their implementation, how things went and the level of support that they received from them after their live. That was the other big thing is we don't want to get this set up and then, once we're live, we don't really get a good, um, support experience from them. But everyone that we talked to seemed to be very happy with the level of support they got even after they, um, they were finished with implementation and live and working on it for quite some time. They could still call back in and have somebody help them with what they needed. Um, again, there is a series of additional packages with our current system that, um, we're paying for in addition to what we pay for our current system. Um, so this is a list of, of what those license fees are and what those, um, components are. And so, um, right now, without doing anything, without doing any upgrade or, or anything, we're paying about $489,000 per year for all these software packages to run the software.
On top of the, what we're already paying, the $1.3?
And, and these will be subsumed by ALEO?
Correct. These, these would no longer be required with the ALEO contract.
Right.
And next slide. So we'll have to keep paying that price there during the, during the transition. So that's the one thing to think of. Um, the fastest track that we can possibly go through with converting all of those components. Again, it's, it's going to be our financials, it's going to be our purchasing, our inventory control and distribution, our human resources, payroll, and, um, benefits management systems altogether is about 18 months. So we'll, we'll need to continue to operate our current software and then move to the new software over a period of 18 months. Now, some of those modules we could bring online before others, but we wouldn't have all of the modules, um, in place replacing our current operations until, um, you know, a minimum July 2022. Okay? So we'll have to, um, continue to pay that. And then the initial, um, cost for professional services and the initial, um, software subscription fee will be $800,000. So that brings us to about $1.28. Um, and then year two, we'll, um, be paying the $363 as our annual package. And then, again, that $489,59 will, you know, will be something that we'll have to pay going on. But once we move to the new software package and our annual recurring costs is a $363,580, And then, again, that 48959 will, you know, will be something that we'll have to pay going on. But once we move to the new software package and our annual recurring costs is a 363580, then we'll be saving about $125,000 just in the additional software that, that we have to fill in all those other gaps that work with our current software.
In addition to the $1,570,000 that we're paying for Lawson?
Right. As I say, what happened to that 1.3 number?
Yes, it's a 1.4.
Where did it go?
Well, once done, once that's all finished and paid for, then we would, we'd no longer, once everything is converted over, we no longer have to pay that. So we would, we would recuperate those, that cost. So the, the costs that we're, we're looking at incurring in our first and second year here with our, with our purchase, we, we should be able to recoup in two to three years after that by, by paying for a much more cost-effective system and not having all these additional costs on top of it. The subscription fees are less than the subscription fees for our current system, and we won't have these ancillary software packages that we're also paying software.
The 1.3 isn't what we currently pay right now. That 1.3 that was on that other slide is what they were saying would cost for the new software. So currently, we spend, I'm going to find here, 387,000
387,000.
A year on the Lawson, but that's only for the accounting software. So the 1.3 is what they bid, so that 1.3 we won't pay if we would go with them.
I think that the, and I want to make sure it's clear that this is a, it's a huge undertaking because you've got all these different pieces running, once, you know, you've got multiple systems running, and then it's the biggest system you have with payroll that affects people the most. Because if you don't get money, you know, that's, that's where you're going to, so that's where we want to make sure as we roll these pieces, making sure we're building it and then having it side by side so that when you're ready to shift over, we're communicating and over-communicating to the piece with our staff. So, and as we start to upgrade it with insurance pieces, we're getting them over that. So, you know, I've been a part of districts when they've switched it over, and I've seen it very smoothly, and I've seen it where it hasn't been so smooth, but we just want to make sure that we're, I, I know that even, you know, just thinking in terms of that's going to be the biggest piece around is the payroll piece and making sure that that department
If people don't get paid, they won't be happy.
Correct, yes.
If they don't get paid right, if you don't get, I mean, yeah, you can get paid, but it's like making sure it's correct too on top of that.
So we'll be running the systems in tandem for, for that period of time, paying for both. And then the, the, the criteria will be to run a payroll through the new system that matches to the penny out of, of the payroll that we've run out of the current system. So everything is paid correctly in the same. It does mean that our staff are going to have to take on additional duties. It's essentially like doing your job twice to, to run everything in tandem for a while to make sure it all matches before we go live, but.
So what is the timeline for implementation? How, how long?
July 2022 would be when we would complete the implementation. Like I said, there, there are some modules, like perhaps we could have the accounting and accounts payable and financials already online and people using the new system, but still running payroll out of, out of the existing system. But it would, it would be at minimum July 2022 before we could cut over and say, okay, we're going to run all of our systems off of the new system, and we'll no longer need the, the previous system.
Though we are a nonprofit, we still are a business.
Correct.
And this within come under being a business expense, is any of it leverageable?
In terms of?
As a business expense.
What, what did you say, Chris?
Well, it's leverageable, and that was to the fact that we still, yes, we are a nonprofit. And in one sense, we operate based upon balanced budget from the standpoint of our tax base and our outgo. But we still have other, as I mentioned earlier, we still have a portfolio of property that we turn on that gives the corporation, as we are, certain value.
Correct.
So to that point, you know, being whatever that value ends up being, this becomes a business expense in maintaining the level of value that we have. So is it leverageable? And I can see that, you know, we're talking about 2022, and we don't know what kinds of changes are going to happen in reference to how IRS and other business changes are going to be made over that time.
Correct.
So I'm just asking, currently, is it, would it be considered leverageable that, okay, this is a business expense that we're spending, and therefore we have benefits that we can leverage in that regard as being a business?
Yeah, so the, you know, the, one of the key things is just operational efficiency and allowing our staff to be able to do more and operate more, more streamlined. Again, trying to get to the point where our staff can have more ready access to their specific information or just information in general.
Those become the benefits.
Correct.
But I'm talking about from the business standpoint.
This is just, this is just the cost of doing business that we're going to do over the next X amount of years. And so if we put the money into this, we feel, as Doug was saying, that this will be the best opportunity for us moving forward, it'll make us more efficient, it'll make us more, I have never seen an accounting department want to switch accounting software, and they were all on board. So it's going to make us better in that regard, it's going to make us more efficient, it's going to make us mortgage-friendly. As far as writing anything off, that's just, that's not what that stuff is.
How long of a training period will this be to switch over?
So what we're going to do is, there's a slide up there, Mark, if you could put that next, that transition timeline on, we'll develop a calendar and a training schedule. And one of the things that we heard throughout this process was, when they switched last time, the training just wasn't where it needed to be. And so the training part of this process will be vital, and that's why we do want to take that year. We could force this a lot quicker. We don't want to do that, we don't want to rush anybody. So we'll start with accounting, and we'll start looking at the transition data that way, so that the accounting department and payroll department has that entire, almost 18 months from now until June 30th of '22, or July 1 of 2022, so that they're ready to go.
I would hope, I'm on the opposite of spreading this out. I'd love to see this expanded right now so that I can bring down my fund balance.
Yep.
Yes.
Since we have money there already, and people are screaming at the fund balance, and this is something that we're going to have to pay for anyhow, I'd rather have this coming out right now.
And it will.
But we do, we, we do have the professional services for the switch built into the 2021 and 2022 budgets.
Which goes to my question about, when I mentioned about leverage, maybe I wasn't clear, meaning the cost, the money that we're spending, is that amount leverageable regarding, you know, our ability to make our efforts?
Yes.
Yes. And then that's what I was asking. I wasn't asking about the functionality of it in that situation. I was asking about the cost factor, you know, being leverageable in reference to how we, in turn, report it, and what kinds of ways we can balance, use that balancing, you know, our overhead.
Yeah, over time, the initial outlay for switching the system and paying the subscription fees on two systems will pay for itself, and both reduce costs for the, all the ancillary software that we won't have to continue to license and, and greater efficiency of the staff, I, I, I believe. That, you know, that doesn't mean we will save money on salary, that it's just, they'll be able to do more with, with the resources, and there'll be less work.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So this recommendation will be brought to the January 26 meeting of the board for approval of the award of the ERP bid.
Before you leave, I do have one question.
Sure. Yeah, hold on a minute.
Let me throw one out, though, I'd love to have as another question.
Sure.
But somewhere along the line, could you bring us up to date on what's going on with the IP's software?
Absolutely, yes.
One of my questions.
That, that's, that one's always scared me since we're paying so much and we don't know what's going on, and I'm afraid that one's going to end.
Absolutely, yeah. I will, I will, I will give you a full update.
Thank you.
It is referenced in the next presentation.
We'll make them more readable.
I'll put that on the list. We, we do try to follow the state format for the
And I think it might be a national format, they like it.
It's a national format, every state looks at trying to streamline it, and you can't take anything else because the federal government is so much. Yes. So I agree, though, Dr. Heskey.
I saw today from Cora, Illinois, and they're streamlined by not having any assessments for six years.
Wow.
Yeah, you could also, you could also
Probably, probably. Yeah, I'm guessing. All right.
Next presentation. Any, these, these are the references, again, that we, that we looked at. School District St. Charles is currently in the middle of implementation, and so far, they're, they're pretty happy with where they're at and how things are progressing and how the project's been running. And Ladue has been running on it for several years, and they're very happy with the results. So then our next presentation. Is our five-year plan. So in this, in this plan, we're going to take a look at, next slide please. Our mission statement, and I'm fully open for suggestions on improvements to my mission statement, so if you have.
You're taking what you're told.
Right. I'm going to go over our responsibilities, what our current staffing looks like, our projects and priorities, and what, you know, what expenditures we're, we're planning as part of this five-year plan. And, and then what we believe staffing-wise were requests that we will need to make over the next five years to accomplish the goals of the plan. Next slide. So the mission of Special School District is, you know, to support student education across all of St. Louis County, for all the students, both special education and technical schools. So Technology Services' mission is to support and facilitate all of our efforts to achieve student success by developing and implementing technology solutions to meet the district's needs. So that's, that's what we do. If there's any way for technology to play a role in supporting or facilitating student success, our department wants to come up with solutions and support those solutions in place to ensure that the students are able to succeed in all the ways that they need. Next slide. So in order to accomplish that, this slide represents a series of responsibilities. A big part of that is, you know, the technology goes into the classroom, so we have a lot of support and collaboration with all of our principals and teachers in special education and career technical education schools within our district, as well as all of the partner districts. We collaborate with all of the technology directors from each of the 22 partner districts and making sure that with the technology that we need in place for our students in the classroom will work and is supported, and we try to alleviate any barriers or boundaries to making sure that the technology that supports their specific learning needs works and is available, and they have access to it. All of our operational and special education information, information management systems is our responsibility. All of our hardware and software that we intend to buy or deploy, that's part of our responsibility to evaluate that and get that deployed. We do have a core group of software developers that do create some custom solutions in some cases, both for the operational and for the special education processes that we have in the district. Data delivery and reporting, all of our telecommunications, all of our data centers, and then all of the network infrastructure that connects all of our buildings and all of our devices, or enables communication to staff and partner districts to connect to resources that we have within our networks. Information system security and our data recovery and continuity planning is all part of our core responsibilities. But in, in short, basically, what we do is whatever it takes to get the technology working for the students and for the staff that are delivering services, we have some, some role or some part in that that has to do with supporting it, providing it, coordinating it, whatever we need to do, that's what, that's what we do in all these areas, whether it's data, hardware devices, software solutions, or access. Next slide. So our current staffing, we have 37 members of the Technology Services Department. We have one executive level leader, the Chief Technology Officer, which is myself. I have three distinct units underneath the department. One is technology support, have a director of technology support that runs that, he's Mark Howell, and he has 15 staff members that report to him. That includes service desk technicians, desktop support, people that go out into the buildings and classrooms to support the devices directly. But we have a mobile device facilitator that does training for teachers and staff on mobile device and mobile device management. We have a service desk manager, and we have an operations manager for the, for the field technicians to report to. System and network infrastructure, we have a director of system and network infrastructure, Tony Spina, and he has eight staff members that report to him, and that includes telecommunications, network and system engineers, and our Office 365 SharePoint Administrator reports to him. Go ahead.
I'm just adding up. So their numbers, like technology support is really 16, does this mark plus 15?
No, he's, he's included in the 15, sorry.
He's included in that, okay. Are there other staff that isn't included here, this admin support, this general admin support stuff, or is this everybody?
This is everybody. One administrative assistant, projects and innovation, that includes our director of projects innovation, our developers, our, we have a special education information management facilitators that fall into that, so there's kind of those.
There's a couple, he has a couple vacancies, he's working on filling, that's why the numbers don't add up to 27.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do have vacancies in their part. Priorities, one of the key priorities are to deploy classroom technology, that includes technology that goes to teachers, paraprofessionals and students. Eliminate any operational software or system redundancies that we have. In the previous presentation, we were talking about our ERP system and how there are lots of other ancillary systems that were part of that, other supplemental systems, so consolidating all of that is part of those, that, that goal that I've been charged with to reduce that and reduce inefficiencies through that reduction of software redundancies. We're moving to a centralized purchasing, licensing, and contract management model. Currently, many technology budgets are distributed across different departments and directors for different types of technology, and they purchase those separately. So we're, we're moving towards a more streamlined model where there's centralized purchasing, all the licenses are handled and managed through a single department rather than individual departments tracking what they've bought and contract management. That includes service contracts, subscription agreements, any, any type of arrangement for software, hardware, or, or support and maintenance for software and hardware. Security monitoring and protection, resiliency of our network systems, data sharing, specifically for decisions and reporting within the district, making sure everyone has the data that they need, but also includes better data sharing with our partner districts as well. And then innovation and transformation in any areas that we need to better support, whether that be the data sharing for digital decisions, or classroom technology, or operational tech. Next slide. So within FY '21, the current year, our goals that we had set forth are to expand one-to-one technologies for all the schools. I will admit that that was greatly accelerated. It was not in my original plan to deploy the number of devices that were deployed, but due to COVID, shutting down physical attendance in schools, we had to deploy a lot more devices to all of our students to support distance learning. So we accelerated that, and we also included devices for paraprofessionals. So we accelerated that, and we also included devices for paraprofessionals because now the paraprofessionals needed to provide distance learning as well. And previously, they would not have necessarily a device issued directly to them, but now we're issuing devices all to paraprofessionals.
Doug, can I?
Sure.
I'm just curious. How many additional computers do we have?
So we'd originally planned on 660 devices to be deployed to the five separate schools, and we wound up with 1,900 devices being deployed.
Where did we find those? I heard those were sold.
It was hard. It was a shortage. Everybody was ordering. I think the state of California ordered 5 million devices all at once. So all of the supply chains were dried up. And in addition, there were some other issues related to some tariffs and trade agreements with where the manufacturers were getting the parts that also dried up supply chain. So it was very difficult. We had initially, again, planned on the 660. We initially put that order in, and we also had a plan for refreshing the one-to-one that we had at the North Technical School and putting that order in. But then we got those machines in, but then after that, everything kind of dried up. So it took us a little while to get everything in place and everything ordered. We didn't have it all come in in August, so some of those were deployed a little bit later, but the bulk of them. We also had computers on hand that we typically set aside for lab computers within the schools. We also had computers that are used for what's called our computer access program, which are generally computers that are reserved for students that have some specific need of an additional device or assistive technology. And then we deploy that to those students. Normally, the student might not get a one-to-one, but they're issued a computer because it has, you know, print software or some other assistive technology component on it. So we utilized a lot of those to supplement. And eventually, we were able to get stock-in and replace those computers that we had set aside or had pulled from assistive technology, computer access pools, replaced them with ones we ordered so that everything is back in where it needs to go.
I was just impressed with your frame.
And the other piece of this that contributes to that cost were, we did have for our one, support our one-to-one program at North Technical High School, we did have a pool of hotspots for internet access to students to take home so they could access them. But we did not have very many. So we had purchased over the course of this, 500 hotspots that have been deployed. So we went from about 100 to 500 and deployed all of those. And those are also hard to come by, hard to get. And we also, in addition to that 500 that we purchased, we had 300 more that we received from the St. Louis County Library System because they got a grant to supply internet access to all the school districts in the county. So we were able to get a group of hotspots from them as well so that all of our students could have a hotspot if they did not have internet access. And this also included hotspots that were deployed to teachers. Didn't have adequate home internet access so they can do distance learning from their homes and paraprofessionals that now they're getting devices for the first time. A lot of them obviously didn't have a need for internet access, so we provided internet access.
Just one thing too about Doug and his team, the technology team. You know, you get the computers, but you gotta image them, you gotta get them set up. So there was, you know, they turned that around really quickly. They had the drive-up that was contacted, so they would give it, the devices to people, to families, to parents, to teachers. So they really, I mean, they did it on Saturdays, they did, you know, so they really did a wonderful job in terms of making sure that they were that customer support and getting these out very quickly to our families and to our staff and to our students and our paraprofessionals. So I know it was not easy, it was a big, it was a big thing to take on, but you guys did a great job with it. And then also including those customer service lines. We had, on average, at the highest, we were like 100, 150 people calling in, like the call center. But then we got it down to, there was 150 of them, you know, calling in each day, so.
About 30 or so, that's a little point, yeah, it settled down. These are family, a family support line, so families that had devices that we issued to them or were having problems with accessing remote learning from their own devices, call our help line. And initially, we had a large volume, but after they got help and were comfortable with the technology, those dwindled down. There's always going to be this stopped working or this isn't working properly, and we do repairs on those. So again, it's down to about 30 per day, so. Out of the 1,900 devices. Infrastructure. Most of this is wireless upgrades for additional access points. We also added access points to the external canopies of our buildings for added internet access if anyone needed access and did not have access at home or could not get access at home. We had access provided in our parking lots for our buildings for the first time. Vulnerability management was another piece. We replaced our previous vulnerability management system with a newer one, and we added on a security monitoring software that takes all of the information from all of our devices and uses a machine learning algorithm to check for known security threats and persistent threats that may be occurring and alerting us if it finds anything that is anomalous out of all the data that it pulls in from all of our devices. So that was added this year. And then network traffic analysis, we added devices so that we can monitor all the network traffic from every building from a central location and see if there's any issues in the data flow or access to the internet from any of our buildings, any of our spots. Next slide. Again, enterprise resource planning system of our operations and benefits. That's a big goal for this year. We'll award that bid, and then we'll move forward with the implementation costs. So a big portion of this is those implementation costs for that system and added costs on top of what we're previously paying. And then for our innovation areas, we're looking at updating our Phoenix software. So that's a big piece of that. So we, this year, we completed all of the components. So now all of the components of our IEP system have been modernized and redone with newer software. So it's all been reworked, redone, and upgraded.
And Phoenix is, how long do you think they'll stay with being Phoenix?
It's going really well. They are starting to sell that to other school districts now. For a while, we were really the only districts running on this version. They had some districts that were using the previous version and had not did. But now that we have everything in place and basically we're the kind of the testbed for their platform, they're starting to sell this to other districts, and those previous districts have moved into their Phoenix platform.
I just want to ask you something.
Yeah, so I'm definitely watching that. I'm watching to see how that goes and how that works. You know, the software is now owned by a new company called Brightbytes that has a whole suite of educational data analytics software that they utilize. And so I'm hoping that Phoenix becomes a core piece of their business and the analytics around special education becomes something that a lot of districts are interested in, and they start adopting this IEP compliance and.
I mean, we've abandoned now, are we, now no longer thinking of doing our own on a.
Not currently, no. But you know, if things change, then we may have to reevaluate that again. You know, in many cases, again, because of our size, because of the level of services that we offer and the breadth of services that we offer, a lot of the other IEP packages for compliance that are out there don't quite give us all of the data capabilities that we need because we utilize our IEP system more as like our core mission-critical application in a lot of other districts that it's an additional system that just feeds into their SIS system. But for us, it's our core operation because of the number of students that we serve and because it's our primary mission is to serve these students.
Thank you.
Next slide. Technology support. We're moving into the next fiscal year, fiscal year '22, and this is priorities that are in the proposed budget that you'll be reviewing that we've submitted. So technology support, we've added, like I mentioned, a significant number of new devices that are being deployed, not just within our buildings, but again, across all the 22 school districts. So all repair professionals, all of these hotspots, all of these Chromebooks that we've deployed throughout all of our buildings. So we needed a more robust mobile device management system and device management system. So next year, we're planning on expanding our mobile device management with the new product that's going to help us manage things a lot easier and handle all the higher volume of these devices more seamlessly. So that's the bulk of that additional cost is actually the mobile device. But we also are deploying and have been deploying what we're referring to as a standard toolkit for classroom. This includes devices to go to the classrooms to support both in-class and remote learning. So these are things like cameras, wireless headsets, laptops, and other large screens, those kind of things to help with classroom management and handling remote students in a hybrid model or fully remote model if we ever have to go back to that. So those are being deployed as well. And then infrastructure, we'll be moving on to wireless and network upgrades at North Boone Ackerman in this next fiscal year. Emergency alert system, so basically if there is an intruder or something within the building, we are going to implement a system that ties in, our two-way radios, intercom systems, telephone system so that we can send a voice or an alert or some kind of announcement out across all devices to make sure everyone hears it no matter where they are in the building. And then, again, more security. But the bulk of that is the upgrades for the wireless. Next slide. Technology for operations, we'll still be implementing the new ERP system in fiscal year '22. There's some additional costs that are associated with that. The bulk of that for '25, as you there is, those additional costs that we need to complete that after the initial purchase. And under innovation, this year, we rolled out a new online application for our homebound teachers to track the homebound services that they're providing to students. We're going to expand that software, the homebound online application. Currently, the process for applying for homebound services is a very manual, paper-based process where physical forms are filled out and faxed in. So that's going to become an online process that's directly tied to the homebound application for delivering services. So everything will be streamlined. Application will come in, we'll know that that application's been processed, and we'll know who's providing the services for those applications once they've been finalized and be able to track those services from start to finish when it's finished. So that's for next fiscal year, basically expanding what we started with the homebound department and eliminated a series of other applications and software that they were using and doing some dual entry back and forth for things, all of the one system. Next slide. FY '23, we'll be completing the transition to the mobile devices. And then one of the big things here will be our service contract for our printer and copy machine maintenance will be up. And this includes service and toner supplies and management of those devices. So we're going to look for streamlining our printing services and printing devices across all of our buildings. We'll have a good opportunity with central office being remodeled to rethink how everything is laid out, where are those print devices, and what that print process should look like so that we should be able to streamline and save money over time on the number of devices that we have out there, the amount of toner that we have to purchase, the amount of paper that we're putting out there and do things a lot more efficiently. So that's our plan for FY '23 for tech support. And then for infrastructure, it'll be due to upgrade our North Tech campus wireless. So a big portion of that is the North Tech campus upgrade as well as modernization of network devices across multiple buildings as they start to age out or get older, including internal connections and things like that. More security controls as well included in that. Next slide. We currently are using Microsoft Office 365 application, so we're looking at streamlining that. Our current school agreement will be up that year, so we'll look at streamlining, adding, adding and working with making more efficient purchases for that cloud-based application. And we'll also be reviewing our telecommunications to see how, at that year, how it's working, what features are missing, what new features are available in the modern systems, where we need to go. And then we'll see in the next fiscal year, we'll evaluate what we need to do for that. Innovation. I don't have a specific number of this. A lot of this is based on investments that we've made in fiscal year '22 to expand those capabilities. So this is really just more working on improving our processes, making things more automated, making data more available to staff, using systems and platforms that we've invested and put in the previous two years. Next slide. Fiscal year '24. Big thing we'll start to do is look at how we're going to refresh all of these devices that were purchased and deployed this year. They'll start to get older. We'll start to look at what the requirements were and what machines are obsolete and what needs to be replaced. We'll also be looking at refreshing that standard school kit that we mentioned, making sure that all the teachers and all the classrooms have the tools, technology, and devices that they need to have positive impact on student education. And then our infrastructure will be finalizing everything with our South View and South Tech. And then this will be the year that we will be going out for bid for our internet and white area connections that connect over buildings. So if it's appropriate, based on the performance, we may upgrade and increase the speeds across both our internet and all of our connections between our building and our here. Next slide. So we're looking at implementing our telecommunications system. And again, we're moving to things like centralized data storage for all records, active and inactive, archival system, automated maintenances, automated access for partner districts. Again, continuing to expand that data availability and data access for data-driven decisions. Next slide. Big thing here would be a refresh. Like I mentioned, it was 1.5 million to roll everything out. I'm assuming it's going to be a 1.5 million refresh. However, what I'd like to do is instead of having these five-year swings where it's a huge purchase and then we run those through, and then another huge purchase, I've been looking at the possibility that let's convert this over to a lease, and we can purchase the devices through the lease and spread that cost over multiple years in the lease, and let's build in the refresh as part of this lease release. So instead of this kind of capital expenditure cycle, it becomes more of an just an operational cost, and this is the money that we're dedicating, the percentage of money we're dedicating to making sure our students and staff have all the proper, modern devices that they need to do their, to do their work. So it may not be a big swing like this. It may be one-third of that and then spread out across multiple years. And then infrastructure. This completes the five-year plan for all of our upgrades across all of our buildings. So we'll be doing the learning center, distribution center, garages, all of our operational buildings will be finished with the wireless upgrades. In all of these cycles, we always start with the schools first and then move on through the rest of the buildings, the operational buildings. And then, you know, beyond this, we'll reassess where we need to be in schools, central offices, all of our buildings with our wireless and network. And then more modernization and automation of network and access control. And then, a new term for everybody. term for everybody if you haven't seen this, is infrastructure as a service. So these are more cloud-based services. So we'll be moving more and more services from our data center physically located within our buildings. In both our central office, we have a main data center, and then we have a disaster recovery data center at our South View High School location. So more and more of these services are going to become more cloud-based and less physically based within the building. So we'll be expanding that. And again, just like with the thoughts on leasing the end computers that we're rolling out, this turns, again, more from a capital expenditure that swings over a five-year cycle to more of an operational expenditure that's just spread out over five years. Next slide. Again, very similar. Looking at more and more software-as-a-service solution, cloud-based solutions, streamlining, and hopefully reducing any redundancies across all those applications. We don't exactly this far out know what that's going to look like, but once everything is implemented with ALEO, which is, by the way, a cloud-based subscription, as is being presented with the recommendation, and elimination of other on-premise software and consolidating into that, we'll look at other ways of streamline solutions. And again, a lot of that's going to be more cloud-based as we move into the future. Innovation. This is where my plan is. Let's take a good, hard look at where we're at with our IEP system. All of our electronic student information that feeds our individual identification plans. Is that application working for us? Does it make sense to continue with this application? Do we need to build our own application and figure out what the next five years is going to look like for that application to make sure that we're not falling behind or in a bind where one of our more critical applications that run, that represents our compliance with providing special education services works properly. And I will do a presentation of the current state and what we're finding, and then a plan of gathering what the requirements would be when we get to those points of review, maybe changing that presentation. Next slide. So additional staff that I'm looking at possibly expanding over the next five years to do what we're trying to do. It says technology administration. This would be, not actually an administrator, but someone that would, we'd hire on to handle those centralized purchasing, centralized licensing contracts and agreements, go through all of our licenses, make sure that we're A, compliant, we're not using software that we're not licensed to use. B, make sure that if we have purchased licenses or subscriptions for things that is being used, and then discontinuing use of things that we're not using. And then making sure that our maintenance agreements and everything is not only financially sound, but doing what we need to do and giving us the support that we need. So a dedicated person to keep track of all that, maintain that, and move us forward in the right direction for that. Technology support services, additional service desk technicians, desktop support technicians, because of the expanded computers, because of the more support that we're doing to make sure that we have in-building techs in all of our schools supporting our students without having to move people around or send people out to other places. That's the idea for those additional staff members. Network infrastructure, again, more people to help with security and network resiliency for that, two more positions, I think. As we grow and add network access, more and more wireless, more and more devices connecting to that wireless, two additional staff members, I think, again, spread out over the next five years, will help us build that infrastructure and support that infrastructure properly, make sure everything works. And then projects for innovation, additional staff member to help with the training and deployment of these solutions that we put out, make sure everyone understands how to use it. We have some facilitators currently, and we have people that help with training and deploying training materials. We don't really have someone who's dedicated just to do that, so that's what we're looking for in that position, someone dedicated just to do the training. So that would take us to 43. Please, at the end of this five years.
So that's just over time? You don't have a sense of plan or, you know, priority?
I actually have two that I've submitted to the chief financial officer for the fiscal year '22 budget, and then probably one or two in the following years after that. Next slide. Any questions? I know that was a lot in a long series of lots of presentations.
So I would have appreciated seeing the spending, the five-year spending plan, because I was adding it up as you were going.
Oh, okay. So summarize, summarize.
1.8 million to 415,000, 415,000. And so it would have been nice to see it continue over here.
Okay, I can do that.
But I do have one question. So is special added transportation hooked up? So like, will we have either new coming to the district or they change their, you know, they move or new ones come in? Is that automatically communicating?
So we do have a system, an interface between the two, but there are lots of issues that we have right now with that data and how that data is collected between the systems. We try to feed from our IEP system, for example, students that are receiving transportation as a related service. But a lot of the details as far as addresses and alternate pickups and those kind of things, those come from other data sources and are merged into that interface. So that's one of the things I've been working with our director of transportation, Kenny Mulder, try to streamline and shore up with our data systems. So we're looking at various solutions to that and adding ones where all that data can be captured and tied back to the special education information. Now, you know, not everything, not all the transportation that we're providing is tied to transportation as a related service. For example, our technology, our technical schools, transportation isn't necessarily tied to that. But we do, that does come from our student information system back down to the transportation. But it's just, right now, it's, there are interfaces, data is moving, but there are missing pieces that need to be shored up. And accuracy is always a big thing because when things change in the partner district, it doesn't always intriculate into our systems in a timely fashion to pick that up. So looking at, again, with that data sharing between partner districts, maybe there's some opportunities to improve that and get that data notification and get that corrected information into our systems as quickly as possible. But that is, that is something I'm working on, but there are lots of, lots of gaps in how that data is being transmitted now, so.
So that would be a priority because they have the direct impact on our.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Excellent presentation.